One o'clock, so let's try to, I guess we have to finish it on the floor. I'm gonna ask Councilman Murray, you guys our prayer?
Let us look to the Lord. Gracious God, our Father, we come now to say first, thank you, Lord. Thank you that you've given us one more day. We thank you, Lord, that you've kept us safe through all the bad weather and what have you. We ask that you continue to touch our city, heal our city, Lord, cover and keep our mayor, this council, and Lord, let your Spirit abide in this meeting. Whatever our thoughts are, let them become our thoughts. Whatever our hands finally do, let it be for your glory and your sake, Lord. You covered us, you kept us, and you provided for us, Lord, and I'm gonna continue to tell you thank you. Continue to keep our police, our firemen, in your care, Lord, and that the things that are going on around the nation, Lord, lead and guide us. Lead and guide us with your Spirit, Lord. And I know you can, and I just believe that you will. We're gonna trust in you, Lord. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and in his holy name, we pray and ask it all. Amen. Thank God.
When you remain standing and Ms. Patricia will give us our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every ten test for all.
I'll call this meeting order. Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Present.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Wiegles.
Here.
We have eight out of ten present, so we have a call. Do I have any corrections to the minutes?
Make motion, first this minute.
Second.
Nine out of two.
Excuse me?
It's nine out of ten or eight out of ten?
Nine. Yeah, I'm sorry, we got nine out of ten present, correction. Let me call this meeting, well, the city clerk have already called the roll, okay, we're gonna go make down the, approving the minutes. Can I get a motion second to approve?
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? The house minutes are approved. We'll start with all business, I'm gonna give it to City Attorney.
This is second reading of an ordinance to establish fees for permits and inspections at residential rates and commercial and industrial rates within the city limits of West Memphis, Arkansas.
Can I get a motion in second for it to spend the rules and place it on the third reading?
So, Lou.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you need a second?
Sit.
I'm saying Bruce first.
Wayne and Mary.
It's an ordinance to establish fees for permits and inspections at residential rates and commercial and industrial rates within the city limits of West Memphis, Arkansas.
Hearing the referee's third and final time, can I get a motion in second to approve? End discussion. Hearing none.
Have we had a chance to, Ms. Patricia, I know you're very, very astute at doing these particular things, but has this been put out to all the businesses and all of that, that these rates will be imposed on them?
I believe that this is just a follow-up amendment if they've already been done. There is actually ordinance already in place and this is an amendment, so they've already been, the rates will not-
Yes, ma'am. I can explain, Ms. Mohammed, I said Attorney, these rates have already been approved since last year. Well, this was just an attachment with the roof jobs that we doing in City Attorney.
Yeah, it's, Ms. Mohammed, if you look at page three, I think, of the ordinance, it's the attachment, the only thing that's being added is a new fee, which says remodeling, repairs, roofing, that's on third, page three of what I'm looking at, which is an attachment to the ordinance. And the reason we just did a new ordinance is because we can't really refer to any section of that attachment, so we just added that and made-
Well, that's good information, I'm glad to know that the public, I'm sure, will appreciate that explanation as well.
Were there any other further discussion? Hearing none, all pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Ordinance number twenty-six seventeen.
That number is twenty-six seventeen. We had no old, I mean, we had no new business, I'm sorry. We downed permission request, permission to accept a high tower improvement project for bid for three point one million.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to kind of table that because we have no representatives here, the Parks commi- mission, the Parks representative, Mr. Parker, is not here, and I think we really need further explanation from-
Sure, that's fine.
We can just table it, I make the motion.
Second.
Just table it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Right. I think we, I'd love to get them here as soon as possible.
Right, right, this is a really, really big deal, and I want to make sure.
Definitely, I agree. I'm gonna make sure, 'cause my director's supposed to have been here, and I'm disappointed he's not, so I will make sure he get here.
Something came up, yeah.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled to the next meeting. All right, now we have planning commission recommendations, you all seen the package, you all sort of talked about it pre-council, and it's actually about the guaranteed loan project, which they are asking that we accept the Kroger Drive, and they also want to subdivide some of the land to be, to bring some potential commercial business.
I make a motion that we approve that recommendation.
Got a motion on the floor?
I missed your motion.
I said I make a, I make a recommendation that, a motion to, recommendation to approve this subdivision of that lot area over by Kroger Drive, which is gonna be subdivided into commercial property, and that would allow some opportunity for businesses to come in and also allow for more tax revenue to come to the city, flow to the city.
'Cause you pretty well don't have any building space left out in there.
No, there's not a second yet.
You get a second, okay. You get a second? No, I did a motion.
I will second that motion with reservations.
I got a motion in second, end of discussion.
I would like, of course, I'm just gonna be very blunt, I have not had a chance to look at this, there's no planning commissioner here to explain anything, I'm just looking at this, and I'm not understanding everything that I'm seeing, I have not, so I'm just gonna have to say no to this, for now.
Is there any other discussion?
Do we have, I mean, much like any other decisions that we made, Mayor and co-council, I know, Mr. Crum, you had several factors that you brought up in pre-council.
Yes, I did, I brought up the list of overlays that we received last summer.
Great.
And compared that to overlaying Kroger Drive or taking the ownership of Kroger Drive, and, but, I had reservations about the other streets that have not been overlaid. But I think that overrides my opinion of the other streets at this point in time. If, if we get this done, we could get some opportunity in here for businesses that we haven't gotten, and that is a good location, because that's a well-heavily traffic area.
I agree, I agree. But can we define opportunity? That's kind of sort of where I am before we say yes. I know, we're talking commercial space.
Commercial space, and we're talking, you know-
Future building.
Get it developed, you know, you're gonna have tax revenue coming into the city, so I, that's all I can do, I don't know what, I don't know what guaranteed loan has in mind, but it has to be a commercial property, so it sounds like a business or something of that nature that brings in revenue.
That's what we're voting on, based on something of that nature.
What kind of businesses are we talking about? Just what is commercial, so are you talking?
I think, looking at, let me explain to you all, you all know from Shopping Way to the Service Road, that's Kroger Drive, the street is there, and then you have the land that's right behind Krogers, between the bank, and on the southern side, the land that starts right at Kroger Drive, that goes up to, what's that old, is it the Works? That used to be there?
Yeah, it goes to the Works.
Yeah, it's that property.
There's acreage on the east and west side of that strip of Kroger Drive that can be developed, that has not been developed, and it's been, I don't know how long guaranteed loans has owned it, I don't know, I don't know the result of the ownership or the history of the ownership, but it's been undeveloped now for a long time, and it is a prime piece of property for a long time, you know?
So, if we accept, if we, the city, we accept this responsibility, do we know, have we, the information that we're, based on what we're looking at today, my question is, if we say yes today, then we're taking on that, that street?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Of making a-
When, I'm sure that when the development starts, that's when that street will probably resurfaced, I don't know if it'll be resurfaced before then, but it's about a hundred yard stretch between Shopping Way and Kroger. I heard a figure thrown out earlier by Councilor Cat, but I don't know if that figure is realistic, I mean, it was sixty-something thousand dollars to resurface it.
Well, really, I don't think, for me, rather, I'm not the smartest cookie in the jar, but I really need to talk to somebody about this. We have it here, this is my first time looking at it, and please forgive me, because I didn't pick up my agenda to discuss it, and if we can't discuss it now with each other, well, we never could, but we used to.
Could we?
Just table it?
Yeah, that's what I asked you have, motion in second, if you all withdraw your, withdraw your all's motion, and then-
A little bit more discussion, I think that's great, but we definitely need more discussion.
Can I ask one question to Councilor Cat? Would the revenue that's coming from this property that you're developing should offset the street repair?
Sir, there's no way I can answer that question. Well, in due time.
In due time, my best answer.
In due time, it would. Yes, all businesses are gonna increase your revenue, there's no way of thens and buts about that. That was this handout I put, or asked Ms. Patricia to put in everybody's packet, these are the sectors of the economy of where this city receives its revenues, and retail sales is one of your largest sales tax providers.
Well, tell me something, is any of that in the Marion School District?
I'm sorry?
Will any of that be in the Marion School District?
It's north of the diversion ditch, so the property taxes would go to-
So, we're saying yes.
The property taxes would go to the city of Marion, the sales tax would stay with the city of West Memphis.
I understand, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, since you talked about the taxes and the repairs and things like that.
Could we possibly get a motion to table it indefinitely and then-
I don't think he would draw it, he-
Well, I will-
You don't, you don't have to, you don't have to withdraw the motion, the motion to table takes precedence over the-
Okay.
I make motion that we table this until further research.
I get a second. All pay by?
Aye.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Clerk, will you call that roll? Just to make sure.
Call the roll?
Yeah, on the table.
Okay.
Mayor McClendon.
Oh, it's a council, it's a council.
Just the councils. Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Cat.
Abstained.
Councilor Crum.
Yes.
Councilor Holt.
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilor Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilor Monday.
Yes.
Councilor Murray.
Yes.
Councilor Wiegles.
Yes.
The motion is approved to table it, and we'll get back with you to give you more information and see what you all-
Who, Mayor, who will get back with us to give us more information?
Well, definitely, I'm gonna get with the, the one who presented the park commission, and definitely let you, because, I mean, one of the things I was thinking, and I, and I thought about it, and I just wanna go with the whole thing, but I don't wanna stop guaranteed from producing a, not industry, a commercial there. I think the conflict from listening to you all was not you all, the ones who we talked about, we're talking about more taking over the street. So, I don't think for allowing guaranteed to subdivide the land was the issue, I think it was more of you all that wanna take responsibility of the street until you all seen some commercial in, commercial businesses going there, and then you all make that decision.
Or even just a little, a little feedback as to what probably they would like to do, just a little more information based on what, you know, we've discussed today.
Sure, okay, I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Committee reports, city police meet?
No, sir, I would like to get with, I think the meeting, as far as Mr. Murray told me, the meetings are held on the first Monday of each month, we're gonna go with that until we have, get together with all the commissioners, we asking for Ms. Harris, for prayer for Ms. Harris, she's been a little under the weather, but Mr. Holt, Mr. Garrett Bruce, myself, and Mr. Willis Monday, we are on that commission, if we could meet this coming Monday at noon here at City Hall to select a chair and set new meeting days and times if we so fit, you all think you can do that, Monday at noon?
Noon, Monday?
Yes, and I'll send out a reminder.
That concludes, Ms. Mohammed.
What do I tell you, on the police commission, Tracy, what do we, what do you all usually meet, police commission? Was-
You mean five commission?
Public Works, I think, is first Monday.
On the police commission, yes.
They were the second.
Oh, that's what we'll do Monday.
Police Commission?
I'm not a minute.
Oh, first, it is now.
Okay.
Yeah, now.
Okay. Public Works.
Okay.
When do you want?
We, we're gonna go to all now.
Yeah, we need to meet after the council meeting, the committees do, and elect chair persons to move forward.
Okay, I'll shut up.
All right, did Park Commission meet?
Park had already given their report.
Okay, Public Works, did they meet?
I mean, you know, we're just on the second, Mayor, are you talking about last month, or you're not talking about this month?
No, this, this month. Oh, well, that's the first, well, sure, none of them meet pretty much, man, yes, it's the second, so.
Some of them not, I don't know.
Well, I don't know, this, this Thursday just came up so quick, so.
Yes, it did.
No meeting, no committees have met, so the next council meeting, budget, then budget.
Budget met the fourth Friday, did not have a call, but the staff presented the sales tax data, I was giving everybody a copy of it. City sales tax came in one million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand six-three dollars and twenty-six cents over the budget, county was two hundred forty-four thousand five oh six twenty-two over budget, and Southland was one million four forty-five three fifty fifty-four over budget, so the council, these are, you have three million five hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and two cents of funds that have not been appropriated yet, so you will need to decide, my personal preference, if we pay off the radio system, that instead of incurring more debt, let's just go ahead and take care of it, but that's something the council's going to make a decision, the budget committee will not meet again until the fourth Thursday, you may want to have a special meeting, but just give us direction on what you want us to do. Are these, are these funds restricted or non-restricted? These are non-restricted funds. The only restriction that has ever been placed on Southland was the council allocated expanded dollars to go into the capital account, and expanded dollars to go into the debt repayment account. Yeah, I remember that one we did. Yeah, we, you know, those funds were set aside to make sure we can buy the equipment we need and pay the debt that we have, so, but the remaining balance of it is at council's discretion. That, that, I wanted to ask that because that falls back into my question earlier about these, these three bridges over in the-
We definitely gonna go through that, let's get through this.
Okay.
All right, since we have known the committees who met so far, appointments, I see a reappointment for Frank Wagner, but I was, Jim, you might be able to explain this, 'cause there's supposed to be an appointment that the mayor makes, not the council.
I'm not positive about that, Mayor, I know-
Well, I was told the two council members, they approved by the council, but the-
Appointments themselves?
That, that one appointment is approved by the mayor.
I know when I went back and read the minutes, 'cause I was trying to build that database from twenty years to go through now, do we have some seats that haven't been filled and needed to, they're just sitting there because we haven't done it yet, but in previous reading of the minutes, it was council-approved.
I know, I know at that time.
But they've been doing it wrong.
Councilman Paul, you were very adamically, very, that I made that appointment of the chairperson, and then the, the council approves, the two council people, and then the other people from the restaurants, hotels are approved by that body.
And I don't know if this is just a reaffirmation of that procedure or not.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the way the statute reads is that, and City Attorney Mike can help me on this, the mayor makes the initial member-at-large appointment.
Okay.
After that, the statute says that any void in the commission is done by the commission with the city council's approval.
I've been seeing something different way that's supposed to be done.
As a matter of fact, I have a picture, and I was gonna talk to you about this, I have a, I took a picture of the statute book, now, unless my book is a little old, but I don't think they've had any changes to that.
Well, what we'll do, I'm just gonna ask the council to table it to the next meeting, and once we get everything down, you see the attorney, then whatever, we'll go for that.
Make a motion to table a recommendation from-
Second that motion.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, sure, we got a few things I wanna definitely talk about, and Councilor Crum, I guess we can start off with some of the questions that you asked.
Okay, we, I don't know if all the public, all the city citizens know that over in Ward Three, we have one bridge, the Reading Street Bridge has been out now for about four years, and then we have the Lear Street Bridge that I believe has just cleared the right-ofways on it, because it was a, it was a question about the right-ofways, and that bridge is to be replaced. And then, of course, you know that the Rich Road Bridge was shut down by the state inspectors, and it's been down now for about probably four, five, six months, and these are all main thoroughfares through our city. And the status on the Rich Road Bridge is that RDOT does have that bridge on their docket for replacement on the eighty-twenty list, but the Reading Street Bridge is not on the list, and I'm not sure about the, the Lear Street Bridge, all I know about the Lear Street Bridge right now is it's cleared its right-ofways, that's all I know. And I know we're in between city engineers, I know we're in between directors at the, at the MPO, but I think it would be good if we could let our citizens in the city, the whole city, know the status, the current status, and possibly when those bridges will be back operational, operational. I've heard some talk that the Reading Street Bridge might become a pedestrian bridge, but nothing's been cast in stone on that either, so that's, that's what I'm asking.
May I say something real quick before we do any further like that? There was, I thought at first they wanted a, you know, a walking bridge and just give that, they want the bridge put back together.
Well, in regards to that, if you, if, I don't know if this council remembers, and if you were on the council at this time, but Sorrel Smith Engineering Firm came in on the Reading Street Bridge with a design of how they were gonna replace the bridge. That's been about two and a half, three years ago, but nothing else has been done, I mean, I don't know, or the citizens that live around that bridge don't understand why it's not been replaced and all this, and that was three, three and a half, four, three years ago, I guess, when Sorrels and Smith came in with a design of a box covert, but then they were told to put it on hold, and they put it on hold, and they hadn't heard anything else about it, so I'm just asking for some clarification so that our citizens-
Sure, let me, let me help you out with some of that, we, I don't let you know what I know, what I have found out, and you know, we had that big meeting at the, the city center that we had a lot of, Ward Three, and some people from other parts of the city that came out and got informed on what we was doing. First of all, on the, on the Rich Road Bridge, and I, and I know that, I know that's been a thorn in the people's side, because I live in Ward One, and Councilman Cat and Councilman Holt live in Ward One, so we did with it on the databases. What we done, and got with Ward, Ward contacted RDOT.
Right.
RDOT talked to Ward and said they had finished over thirty percent of the design phase for that, and he talked to someone with RDOT, and they said they supposed to start in June of this year.
Okay.
Completing that project, and they're going with a box covert, they're not gonna have those sticks in the woods that's down in there right now, that's been rotting, that's causing us all the problem.
Right, right.
And, you know, RDOT has full authority over those bridges.
Right.
So, for the Rich Road Bridge from RDOT, now, if it's not true, RDOT told us, that's the one we depending on, they are saying that they're gonna start on that bridge in June.
Well, I know that RDOT has actually assigned a project number to that bridge, so that means it's moving along, you know?
And, I mean, like I said, I apologize to the citizens, it ain't happening as quick as I want it, 'cause I have to go all the way down to Avalon to go of so areas, but that's something that's definitely that we wouldn't be dealing with, and I ask why the city can't do it, because like I say, it come back down, I think, to what, I hate to use you, Councilman Cat, but money, we just don't have the money to go in and say, okay, we gonna spend two and a half million dollars on that one bridge, because guess what, when someone do that, someone on the east end gonna say, well, spend two million dollars on our flooding issue, someone in Ward Four gonna say, spend two million on this, or someone in Ward Two gonna say two million, so we have to go through the state who is handling that.
I understand.
And I just pray that the people be patient with it, because it's not them just being affected, we all been affected, that's going, but June is the date that I do have for the Rich Road Bridge, to get the Rich Road Bridge, and they said they gonna build it and do it right, they're not gonna do it, we have these problems where things are running away, and we have to shut down the bridge, 'cause they shut down the bridge, and they said if we didn't do it, they was coming in and doing it, if we didn't do it or not, they was gonna make sure it was shut down. The other two bridges, I have not yet got information on the Lear Street and the Reading Street Bridge yet. I knew at one time when we did have the MPO director, it was a thing where they did talk about some options about making a walking bridge, and at that time, Councilman, Wiegles had told me that the people wanted a, a travelable bridge and a, a walking bridge, so I don't see yet how they gave us a number, they may have, but they ain't confirmed it with us. I know Ward has been the main contact with them, so it's not because we in between directors that they not been communicating with us, they have been communicating with us.
Well, it wouldn't be, I understand, but that one's been down for four years, and it seems like in four years, we should have had some kind of solution for that bridge.
I agree with you one thousand percent, but I do wanna tell you that sometimes they look at projects with the most urgency, and not saying that any project within the city is not an urgent project, I'm sure if you sitting in front of a street and it's closed down, you want it done every day, but when they look and say the best way they can spend dollars in our area on certain projects, the Rich Road Bridge, it's the states that want priority, once I get that information, I will give a watch, see can we look and see how Lear Street or Rent Street has been put on a timetable, or even if it has a number at that point, but I know they did explain to me, and they told me actually priority is what takes priority over whatever they do.
Understand, but that, that bridge was the one that I was talking about, I think it was in June last year, and at that time, the two engineers over at RDOT, Glenn, did not have a project number from Little Rock to work on that bridge. That bridge, that bothers me the most, because you've got children that are going to school over at Briggs and Bragg and West, and if you go over there, anybody, go over there and you pull up, walk out to that, that bough, you will see a trail where these kids have been going across that, that bough going to school, and that, that's gonna create an unsafe situation one day. Do what?
But definitely, we are, I'm definitely gonna reach out to them and see- But definitely, we, uh, I'm definitely gonna reach out to them, um, and see if the little bridge and Red, Red Street Bridge, 'cause that's important, and we'll make, wanna make sure that the children are safe, and so I do everything to find out how they gave us information, or even if it's in the pipeline right now, so we will reach out with that.
Uh, Mayor, just, just one more thing on that, that bridge, is if, if it was operational, it would take a lot of traffic off of Avalon, because the Brag children could, or parents could actually come across that bridge and pick up their children on the east end of that school, and the, uh, Avalon would be used for picking up the West children, instead, it's all just jumbled up over there now, if you ever been by, I know you've been down there, 'cause I've been down there, so it's pretty jumbled up. And I am not sure about the Lear Street Bridge at all, all I know is that, uh, our last MPO director told me that the, you know, I think she told us it here, uh, in a, in a meeting, that the, there was a right-ofway problem with that bridge, but then I heard it's been cleared up, so I don't know the status of what's going on there either.
Well, definitely when I call, and I make sure I ask about Lear Street and Red Street, so I can give you some better information on what we had, and you all can, definitely let the people that's living in Ward right around there know, uh, where we at on it.
That, that's about all I'm asking, is just to get the people informed and, you know, so, okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the Seventh Street Bridge right there by the Home Center, on Seventh Street right there by, um, True Value. I went over there last week, and, um, it's a big hole, it was a big hole in that bridge, and, uh, I went and talked to the people over at the, um, the center, uh, IDOC over at, you know, I went over and talked to them, and they told me they had to talk to the bridge people to come out and fix the hole, but then I went down and talked to the guy at the city, showed him this picture I have here, and they went down there and fixed it. Because it was so bad till somebody could have a bad accident, and I mean, it was two spots they had to fix right then. And, uh, so the Seventh Street Bridge need to be looked at also. Because it's crumbling, it's really, it's really crumbling.
Sure, when I make that call to RDOT, I definitely let you know, and I wanna thank our city for, because it is a state highway, so.
It was, it was built in, uh, sixty-seven, it's been there for a long time, to collide tra- to collide traffic on Seventh Street.
I mean, uh, regarding, uh, Councilman Monday, I, I do remember reading something about one ninety-one, which is Seventh Street, and, uh, the state's got a huge project scheduled for that, I just don't know when it's gonna come.
I'm gonna get a good, I'm gonna get another update, because actually I do have, uh, a new, uh, MPO administrator that's gonna definitely be working on reimbursement, things that we should have gotten in, and who's working and finding out the information, and you all may know her, you remember who's working for us, started yesterday, Ms. Rhonda Standridge?
Yes, but, yes, sir.
She's back with the city of West Memphis, working in, Rhonda Standridge, yeah, so she's back, so definitely, uh, we talked, we was together yesterday, and I'm sure tomorrow I be with us to look at some more things, as well as Eddie Brolly is doing some assisting with her too, to get that MPO right where it needs to be.
So she'll be, what's her title again, Mayor, Rhonda?
She's the MPO administrator.
She's down at the building.
Yeah, she's at the, the building.
I have one, just, uh, we're gonna wrap this bridge issue up, the name of the bridge that's on Pope and Twenty-first Street, that, that is, I don't know if that's a bridge or a back fence. Because we're talking about bridges and issues and children following and...
I think I'd be, I answered that one quick, the state's getting ready to do from Twenty Street to Twenty-Fifth to the new school, so they're gonna actually fix that whole street, and that bridge crossing the whole nine yards.
Our children are walking there.
And, you know, the state just don't move as quick as I, I really want them to, but they get ready.
They're, they're walking every day, wanted to, I'm glad that you publicly, publicly made that, and while we're talking about...
Sidewalks and everything gonna be there.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, and the people on, specifically, uh, the residents on Twentieth Street, I want you to reiterate again, the state was responsible, not the city.
Yeah, state.
And they are doing this work, and it will begin, so the issues that have been the complaints over in that area, we are addressing.
Yeah, actually, it's supposed to start soon as it dry down, I think this year, the wet season, and the cold, whatever, but soon as that is...
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I think that, they will probably start pretty fast, because they're trying to do that in, uh, I guess, connection with the buil- the building of the new Jackson, I mean, Wunder.
Wunder, Wunder Junior, the East, yeah.
Which would be even more effective, 'cause we having a lot walking right now, so that's perfect, that's wonderful, great, thank you, sir.
All right, few things I wanna talk about, you know, this last week, we had the, uh, committee meeting, I had Todd Peterson, Ward Wimbush, as well as Dwayne Rose, they came out, many of the council people, always there, we wanted to listen to the concerns of the people of all throughout our city, uh, I think Ward and Todd did a great job in explaining the different projects we was doing, the thirty-two million, basically, they're working on the wastewater part of it, Ward talked about some issues with the, uh, the pumping and different things like that, we know that the citizens asked about census, we're gonna do our due diligence to look into that, uh, Todd got with me a few months ago, we got the, we started cleaning out the bios, and I think you all see from Thirty-sixth Street all the way up to probably Ingram now, and they look pretty clear, and they can, uh, hold more water capacity of water than keep going through our city, uh, we got routine checks, uh, went down with, uh, Mr. Rose, who's going through to make sure that pipes, our pumps, I'm sorry, are working, pumping as well as if anything that may be down now, uh, Todd gave him an individual that can help him get it fixed if something did come up, so we make sure all those things going and moving forward, wanna continue doing that, I just wanna inform and let the people know that these things are happening, like I said, at the meeting, this last flooding, five inches of rain at one time, I mean, hey, it ain't nothing we can do to stop that, you know, and some people, most people did understand that, but we doing what we can to try to be proactive and making sure that water moves freely, as well as Mr. Holt talked a lot about, uh, the leaves and stuff being in the, uh, drainage, please, if you cut your yard or blowing your yard out, make sure they wrap up, or rake up your leaves and not place them in the drainage, 'cause those things have an effect, uh, on drainage as well, I mean, maybe small, but any impact affects our drainage systems, or anything that we can do to make sure we, the citizens can help us with that, that's something we definitely wanna make sure we keep going, so, uh, um, flooding, we'll keep you updated, I guess, monthly, or every by-monthly, of what we doing and the information you need. There's, uh, ice issue, once again, I definitely wanna commend, uh, Todd Peterson and his utility department, as well as O'Dell Slaughter and the street department, they have done the outstanding job, I had a friend call me this morning and said, "Mayor, I'm finna send you some pictures of our streets and some pictures of Memphis Street," but she was just playing with me, but I went on the, but I turned on the news, and I took pictures of what the news was showing, I said, "Okay, you see this little street, and the, and the ice is melting, that's something that we don't have control, you kinda gotta talk to God about that one," but Memphis had big trees falling over their city streets, twenty thousand people is without, you, uh, electric, how many people in West Memphis don't have power right now? And it's because of hard worker, Todd, and the young men and women that's in our city that keeps our electricity on, uh, Mr. Slaughter and them out in salt, pretty much all the areas that needed salt, they were down there, they were the backstreets, they were doing the whole nine yards to keep our streets going, and now, did they get every street? No, not possible to get every street, but they done an outstanding job, so when you see them, men and women with the utility and the street department, please make sure you just tell them a good job, I think it means a lot coming from this council body.
And also, a lot of the tree limbs and things that are being cut away from wires.
Exactly.
Like during the summer, that helps an awful lot, and I would like to say on that commu- committee meeting, I would like to commend Ms. Candace, I don't know her last name, but she was very persistent with us, uh, we communicated a lot with Mr. Crum, Mr. Willis, through email, and she was just persistent, talking to all of her neighbors, and she is a citizen, but I would like to commend her for steadily pushing that issue about, especially in the area where she live, but basically all over the city, and we talk about the rain, but out of every bad thing, God always brings forward something good, we have no control over the nature of God, but because of all of that rain, we had a really big meeting that we should have had maybe a long time ago, and some really good things were brought out because of that big rain, and there were no disasters, there were no casualties, there were no nothing like that, so thank you, Ms. Candace, I don't know your last name, but thank you so much.
She did do a good job of, uh, helping gather information and coordinate that, and, uh, I thought it was a very positive meeting, um, when I, when I attended it, and, uh, I wanna say something to Todd over there, we had an outage of, uh, power, I think it started at four-thirty, uh, one morning, first morning.
Four-six, exactly, yeah.
And, uh, within an hour, the power was back on and running, yeah.
That kind of true, so thank you, thank you.
I love to say we live in a great city.
Exactly, and I guess the last thing I wanna speak to, speak on is that, um, we all know about the tragedy that happened right here in our area, um, right across the bridge in Memphis, uh, with Mr. Tyree Nichols, that was truly a very unfortunate incident, and actually, once I received the full-length video, the first person I called was, I, I called my big sister, Ms. Mohammed, because we, we went through this about fifteen years ago, and, and all the, the, the women here, you all are mothers, and the fathers are fathers, and, and every time our kids go out, we want them to come home to be safe, and really, honestly, in our black community, it has really been real for us, because I remember my mom used to always say, "Do everything you're supposed to do, uh, don't be disrespectful to an officer, make sure you do everything, 'cause we want you to come home," and anyone, this, this incident showed that it doesn't matter she's black or white, you have to have officers that has a heart, that care for people, who has a conscience, and when you got watched and viewed, those things that happen on the news, it really affected me, and as I've talked to many citizens within our community, I know you seen on social media, the things that people have said, I think one thing that really touched my heart, I actually talked to one of our officers, and they was very upset about it, because they said they deal with these situations every day, so this one, a black or white thing, this was a right thing, and to see that young man beat like he was beating his pepper spray, beat with a knife stick, kicked in the face, punched, tasered, no help at the end, in handcuffs, I just said, this is not a way that our people, our first response would ever act. Two, two of the, uh, uh, emergency service people came out there and asked them, "Was he okay?" He sitting on the car dying. We can never allow that to happen, it just goes to show you, we all pull together, we have no problem, actually, I was talking to Officer Ford, and he was so upset about the issue, because he said that so many people come to work and put their badge on every day, and they do the right thing, but it only take five officers that give all of our police departments a bad name because of the actions of them, and we have to go out, and I'm saying this because I just got a text that a police officer in Memphis just have got shot, and I want Memphis to know that we are praying for that officer, but these men that went put their lives on the line every day, and there thousands of them, and you get five, six knuckleheads go out and do something that's crazy, that mess up for everyone, we sometimes ask why we don't have a lot of police officers, not the police officers don't wanna come here, who wanna always be a police officer? Because of everything they have to deal with, and then on top of things like this, you still have the senseless murders that happen within our community that they have to deal with, so I just wanna say, I'm, I'm praying for justice for the young man, justice for Tyree, uh, I'm sending our prayers to his family, I met his mom yesterday at the funeral, that was tough, and I'm just praying that everything's come out all right, but I'm also praying for the safety of our men and women that put their lives on the line every day, because sometimes we don't see it, but our officers goes out to environments that they going in to, to do a regular check, and can often actually lose their life, and you know, we have, not only did we deal with Ms. Mohammed, we deal with the, uh, Deontay Pharaoh, we also deal with the, uh, Mr. Evans and Mr. Power, so we have seen both sides of it, and I think with us having that experience, that just want us to just be a beacon of light and hope for our area and Memphis, and show them that we can move past this and, and, and be a better city, and be an example for them, or whatever they may be going through, so, um, I just wanna say, uh, Memphis, we praying for you. Anyone else have anything else? I had no presentations, I had no announcements, we had no citizen requests, I'm gonna get the motion in a second, to adjourn.
Second.
I'll pay by. Oppose?